Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axon County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, June 20. If you please help me in welcoming Pastor Michael Kelly to help us with the invocation and please rise. Join me in invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we're thankful for the opportunity once again to be in your presence. We're thankful, Father, for these citizen services, citizens, servants who have decided to give their life to the betterment of this community. We thank you for their commitment to do the honor and country. We ask you to lead them and crown them with wisdom as they make decisions for the residents of Axon County. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray.
Thank you very much. You join me in Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for going.
Thank you.
All right, public comments. See none approval of the minutes? Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes for June 13?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve.
I moved you through the bits.
I will second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Noel, do you have any comments?
I don't have any today. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner. Okay, I also do not have any today. So we have some time. Stephanie Barnes will join us at 10:30 for the appropriation request. Eric, can you hear me?
Yes.
When we were discussing this morning when you were on the phone during workshop about working on the procurement policy.
Yes, yes.
We decided that we would like to utilize Marshall Counties as a guide for us, like as a template. And if you can just kind of read through it and make any notes that you have on examples that we've faced or or different things, then we'll kind of roundtable up with all the ideas to kind of create our own of what works best here in Axon County to stay consistent.
Okay. That sounds good.
Just want to make sure we're kind of all working off the same template. And I think we will kind of dive down into maybe developing a vehicles and equipment piece of that as well as projects such as building projects and stacks and different things.
Construction remodeling.
Yeah, construction remodeling.
We already know that EMS and Sheriff of Rothenbridge have some internal policies already reflecting how they handle vehicles and equipment replacement. So we'd like to kind of get that information, kind of fold that inside the policy so it's consistent.
Sure. Michelle, are you okay with bumping up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is the same thing you've emailed?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Put the paper copy in the in the box. I'll get it next week. Thank you.
Previously in 2022, the final assessed valuation was 203 million, 255,785, which represents each mill equivalent to 203,255 dollars. And that is number four on the budget work sheet. This year that total has increased to 214 million, 72,666 dollars, which therefore will represent each mill levy or each mill of the levy being equivalent to 214,070 dollars, basically of revenue to come in. So with the increase of revenue, the increase in the levy value, the levy is expected to drop to be revenue neutral down to 47.093. So that's kind of what we're looking at. And that is broken down by the different funds that we still allocate on our budget worksheet. In the process of getting the budget information sheet, I have to certify my values this year with last year's income taxes to all of the other districts that I share districts with, which are like school districts. I have a few cemetery districts that I share and I have a fire district. So I have to send that out to them. And then at that point in time, everybody can finalize the revenue neutral rate that would be for each of the current years. So I had to wait until I got the information back from them. They had to get the information from me. So it's kind of like a timeframe between the fifth and the seventh that everybody's sharing information. So this information was actually done on the sixth, but I verified all the numbers before I actually sent everything out. We have multiple reports that we have that we have to verify all of the numbers, the total. So everything has been sent out. It was sent out on the 15th. Twelve entities, so.
And so just to explain a little bit of because I know when the public got their valuation notices, they freaked out and
Oh, yes.
you know, started and and the valuations in our county are based on sales on the open market. So your real estate sales that happen within your county.
The valid arms length transaction.
Correct.
Sales.
So our values assessed valuation went up to 10 million 816,000.
And I apologize because the email that I sent you, I had a little bit more explanation as far as what the actual numbers did.
Yep.
The actual adroit tax is based off of the real estate, personal property, which is not including watercraft. Personal property, basically not including watercraft. And then the state assessed utilities. So those three numbers represent the adroit part. There's also, as you can see, the additional pages. There is a motor vehicle estimate, which, as you can see, is motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, commercial vehicles. There's rental excise tax, 1620M, which are farm trucks and/or heavier commercial trucks. And then there's a little bit of local applicable. Those are all in addition to, along with the watercraft breakdown. So the estimates are all have all been given, which is those are the components of the different tax for redit.
And then Mark, you got to plug these numbers in.
Yeah. So from there, I take all of these figures into the kind of workbook, all of the budget numbers that's provided by the departments. Put in R and R rate or the R and R. And then it gives us sort of a calculation in that spreadsheet that shows how much we would need to reduce the budget to stay at R and R. And then I'll provide that information to you this week when I get it done.
And just for the public, so the R and R rate is showing what we would generate the exact same amount of property tax based on the revenue as the year before using the the current valuations. So.
It's a formula that they have and it's with this year's value, last year's collected tax.
So this is the part where the public should pay attention on their taxes. It's not the valuations. It's basically the the R and R rate and what we have to do on our end with the budget. And notating every other taxing entity in the county they should pay attention to also because we're just one piece of the pie. Your school districts, your cities, your cemeteries, all of your things.
I have.
All of the districts. Townships.
Fifty, oh, almost 60 different taxing units in the county. And each taxing unit is broken because there's different layers. Fire district layers, your cemetery layers, school districts, city layers. I mean, there's all these different layers that compile and all the areas that are the same as a taxing unit. So you may have, you may live next to somebody and your levy may be different because you're in different cemetery boards, cemetery districts. So there's a lot of different pieces that create that levy. And each piece turns in their budget requests, which we do have Carolyn Brock coming in next Friday, the 30th, to do a lot of our budgets. She's doing all of our township, some of our fire districts and some of the cemeteries. All the documents that we need prior to release. Be able to get that on the R and R notice that there is need for.
And one of the things that we had learned in our budget workshops and just the more we learn about this R and R rate is it's good practice for the commission to go ahead and take the steps that we are going to exceed the R and R. Because that allows the public to be notified sooner, gives us an expanded timeline to work on the budget. And so that's, I believe, the direction that we want to we want to give the guidance to you of go ahead and saying we're going to exceed it, however, nail down it.
The value is for certifies made by the county appraiser May 31st. So with that certified value, that's the value that I base all of this information on. However, there are changes. There are hearings that could potentially pop up when people pay their taxes. If they've not had a hearing for for that tax year, they can protest that. So values can be changed. Property can be found and be put on. Personal property, especially like your your vehicles, people buy and sell trade vehicles all the time. So you have values that come on, values that come off. So values fluctuate between now and the end of the year. And October is when I will basically relook at that value. And once that value is determined, then there could be a change. If that value goes down, then our levy could potentially, our R and R could go higher. I mean, it could be closer to what we pay actually, depending upon what that value does in November. So these are just strictly estimates. So yes, it is wise for the commission to probably potentially go ahead and and request that or look to go over that. And they not because last year we got values from a state assessed utility that when they did their rendition, they did it incorrectly. And we have a lot of that. So we have a lot of, a lot of entities that actually were in the review. But if you don't have an R and R hearing, if that value decreases, I can't let you go over that R and R. You can't get that makeup value, so say, to to create or to that new R and R.
Well, that's what the state putting this budget timeline together for us. The last day for us to notify you is July 20th, which is a Thursday of the intent to levy above the R and R. And we won't, I mean, with the holiday, holiday and just time, Tuesdays, meetings in between there. I don't feel like we would have that done. I mean, preliminaries are already 2 million over without appropriations. So we have a lot of work to do on our end. And so I think it's just probably safer to say, we're going to let you know, you know, instead of waiting to crunch you for a timeline on our end.
Right.
That.
I will go ahead and give you a form next Tuesday then.
Perfect. Okay.
Potentially whenever you have some. Does it mean that?
We will definitely, but
if you go ahead and have that R and R hearing, it just protects you so that you can't go above what.
Good morning. Do you have anything else on that topic? Okay. Are we going to ask anything about the directions or not? The machine?
Oh.
I have, I missed a phone call from Angie. Her and Chris Kerwin are going to do a call with me and we'll discuss that. My biggest fear with going with the central counter is what I need to provide the 10 different polling locations. I need to provide them a good, secure lockbox. So I don't want to, I have blue boxes that are just a lockbox that we have, but I would prefer having something just a little bit more that looks a little bit more secure. Because if they're going to drop their ballot, their ballots in there, I want them to know that it's going to be brought to the office accounted. So even if it's something that we potentially put on the tabletop, so I'm going to talk to them. That's one of the things I'm going to talk to them about is what what we need to provide to our to our polling locations to let them know that we're changing things, but it's we're still secure. So.
Well, it seems it could be a huge cost savings.
Yes.
And it sounds like it's been more efficient.
Yes.
To centralize the county.
Yes.
The size of the county, maybe something bigger, maybe you'd be there for it.
Not necessarily. They have bigger machines, which we don't need the big, big machine. But they have big machines that'll run 1,000 ballots every 10 minutes or so. I mean, it's just they're huge, huge machines. And I know Shawnee County, I believe, has two of them.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, I don't think, I know Justin and Amanda Snowden actually have the machine that we're looking at or that I would be looking at. They have it there because when he does his coding and his testing of his ballots, he runs it through there. So it would be the same machine that they use for their testing purposes and their coding purposes.
Yeah.
So.
They can help right here and there.
Yeah, definitely. They know how to operate it.
That's good to me.
So, yeah.
And so, so the difference would, you wouldn't have to tote out the electronic machines to every polling location. You'd have a lock box for ballots. And then you would bring, then the folks working the polling locations would just have the responsibility to bring the lockbox back to your office. And you would feed them into one centralized machine that would calculate it for you.
Calculate it by precinct.
By precinct. So you wouldn't have to do the online spreadsheet anymore. Like it would all be automated.
To do, we would still be able to do the automated spreadsheet because we have that by precincts, by race. So we would have our, you know, our different candidates listed. We would have the different precincts across. We would have the total numbers in there. We would just have that information that fast. And it would take us longer to type it in because it's going to be right there. But we don't have to wait for our poll workers to verify everything. They would just be able to simply count the ballots that they have left and make sure that they balance. Bring the box into us. We can, we can load all the different polling locations at the same time. The machine will be, or there'll be a stick, just like what we have with our ERM. But we won't have to have a tabulator at each location, which is what we have now. So we have to wait for those tabulators to print. And then they bring it to us. We run it through our ERM, which reads what their information is as long as they balance. That's get, that's what gets entered into our spreadsheets. We would basically have all of the ballots, run them through one machine all at the same time. And then it would give us a report that would have everything broke down by precinct, by by candidate list. So it would be a lot quicker, a lot less handling of the ballots.
It's going to be a shorter day for your poll workers.
Yes.
Sure, probably a shorter day for you.
Yes.
So, Michelle?
Yes.
I've got a question. So does that, do you have to run them by batches? Do you have to run that precinct through the machine? Or will it separate everything out on its own?
It would, it would not separate the ballots, but it would separate the results on the the internal machine.
The printout would, the printout would all be separated, but it wouldn't physically remove the ballots or place them and collate them.
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. Well, that that shouldn't be a problem.
No. The only thing we would have to go through after election night because we do have post-election audits. And we would have to categorize those. We do that now because we have all of the early advanced and the mail. And that would still be handled as is with the M200 because we just run that tape and we enter it with. I think that would be the best, the best way to keep one of those in the office. Because those machines tabulate as you enter. And we have that two-week process of the advanced voting. And then we have the mail and all of that gets put through that one machine. So we would have two different sticks versus 11 sticks.
But you would say a lockbox, very advanced voting in your office.
We would probably still have the tabulating machine, which is what we have.
You do that one, okay.
Yes.
So when you talk about a more substantial lockbox, are you talking about something that's like too heavy to move for the average person? So somebody just don't steal it or what? Or is it just the lock or what are you talking about?
I'm thinking it, I want something just to show that, show that the voters that we are taking it seriously with more of like a lock. And this is something that I will talk with Angie and and Chris about in regards to what other counties are doing, what other counties offer. So if, I don't think that we want to spend the extra money to get anything that's too heavy to move because we have to get it moved into the office. And it's going to be a learning thing with our poll workers.
So would that be, would the poll workers be responsible for bringing that in that night? I mean, because that could be
Correct.
That could be a problem if it was very heavy or
Right.
very large because, you know, if it's any larger than the equipment that we've got now, a lot of the vehicles and stuff wouldn't hardly handle them.
Right. No, I think it's probably going to be more with just like the labeling and the security of our poll workers. Communication with our poll workers. So. Which shouldn't be much different than what they do now other than just having somebody keep their eye on it.
I was thinking more about weight, you know, loading and unloading, which I've been helping them to the courthouse after they arrive. But I mean, if it's a heavy machine, getting it loaded into a trunk or back into the vehicle, that's going to be the logistics problem that we just want to keep our eye on when we're looking at what we're going to get.
We have, you know, the blue boxes we have, Eric. And we have, I'm looking at something that would be less than half the size of that.
Oh, okay.
Because our largest polling location roughly is 3,000, a little over 3,000 voters. So the max capacity I would need would be something under 4,000, under 3,000 ballots. So and those blue boxes will hold a couple thousand plus, I mean, they'll hold, we have, how many did we have as far as? 2,000, we had over 2,000 in 2020 of the mail ballots, and they were all in there with plenty of room to spare. So we get something, we would be able to get something smaller than what the blue boxes are. And potentially something with wheels or something that they would be able to pull. But I will have something from Chris and Angie to present to you guys once I get that phone call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Stephanie Barnes, Project Concern, 2024 appropriation request. Morning.
Did we get anything or did we have anything sent out to us?
Yeah, I, you know, to Eric with, with it. You said yesterday? I think it was Thursday. Last Thursday.
We can put the hard copies in your box, too. He printed them out for us today.
Hello, thanks for having me, guys. I am Stephanie Barnes, Director of Project Concern. Mark, I haven't officially met you, so. Everybody else I know around the table. But let's see, so Project Concern, you guys kind of know what we do. We provide senior nutrition services and public transportation for the county. What we ask request-wise is to help us provide senior services, which include congregate meals. Those are the meals that are served at two senior centers in town. We do a daily meal with social activities, trying to pull people in because it's a safe place for them to do so. Home delivered is like a meals on wheels, daily meals delivered to their homes Monday through Friday. And then we also help with some of the supplemental programs that are available to seniors. We do a monthly commodity box. And we also provide the senior farmer's market coupon program. We did it '21, '22, and '23 so far. And that is just a little extra help with money to use at the farmer's market. We do provide general public transportation for anybody in the county. But again, the numbers that I've got is kind of talked about. And obviously, our request is just for senior nutrition services. So in '22, we finished the calendar year '22. It's a little hard for me sometimes to come up with my numbers exactly because I have to run like three separate number counts because we do calendar year, my fiscal year actually ends on September 30th. And then transportation and the state stuff, obviously. So number wise, this is for calendar year '22. C1, which is our congregate program, the in-center meals was 6,726 meals. And for home delivered meals, it was 30,482 meals, which is a grand total of 37,208 meals throughout the county for calendar year '22. When we talk about people served, the numbers I have on that actually run for our fiscal year. So in our fiscal year '22, we were serving 257 individuals. And then our current number halfway through, which was the end of March for our fiscal year '23, is 223 people. Those numbers I didn't technically have in my packet, but just kind of gives you an idea. It is a super helpful service in our community. As of right now, calendar year of May 23, we are at 2645 for our in-center meals. So that'll again, I'm pretty sure will be a little bit higher than that 22 number. And then we're at 13,040 meals for home delivered as of the end of May 23 for calendar year. So projecting to be over 31,000, 32,000 meals in that area, which is very, very good. I mentioned in my packet that we are the number one provider of home delivered meals in our region. Our region covers Donovan, Nima, Brown, all the upper or these ones, not Leavenworth. I don't compare it to Leavenworth. I don't know what their numbers are. But size-wise, that's where we're at. We are like very substantially. But size-wise, that's where we're at. We are like very substantially higher, and it's, you know, partially in part because of our funding and our ability to do what we do. The way we fund our nutrition programs, which is a budget of roughly $290,000 per year. We get reimbursed per meal from state federal funds. This reimbursement rate is 2.65 per meal from those funds. We also ask for suggested donations, but this is not a requirement. This is what we call program revenue. If somebody can contribute for their meals, we ask that they do it $3 a meal, but it is not a requirement. Anybody 60 and over can come have meals in center or have home-delivered meals without being required to pay. Again, this is because of the funding help that we have, that we can still provide the service that we provide. We also get United Way funding. In '22, it was $20,000, and in '23, it is $22,000. We obviously write for any grants that come along that we can from foundations and trusts. Meals on Wheels America, that kind of thing. We are partnered with Meals on Wheels America, so that is kind of a cool thing. I'm going to go to a conference this August to learn about some maybe new, new things that we can do in that program. We also rely on donations and fundraising. We are a member of the Ashes County Community Foundation. We hold an annual fundraiser. I think we're going to push it to fall this year, early fall, so. And then last but not least, our county contribution, the $125,000 is what we are requesting for 2024. Is the same as our '23 request that was approved. And I guess I would say that, wrapping it kind of up, is that without the county's assistance and without their help of that $125, our program really wouldn't be what it is. It would look a lot differently. We would have to obviously find other resources as we could, if we, if we could, and then how much would that cut back? How many people would we really be able to serve? We cannot require anybody to pay for the meals, so that's like the big, since we accept federal and state money to help pay for those meals. We cannot request and require anybody to pay. So if we weren't to have the funding that we have in the requested amounts that we, we asked for, we could look at cutbacks or limiting how many people we can serve and having to start wait lists. And obviously, that's a detriment to somebody's likelihood. We do, we have a lot of people that really rely on our services that cannot afford what we do, so. Doing some good things to stay in steady course. I definitely see that we'll be a little bit higher, continuing on and on. So I don't know if you guys have any specific questions?
I know I'm on the board with you, so, but they might talk a little bit about the recovery since COVID and difference.
So COVID definitely limited. We didn't have our centers open. We still provided all of our home-delivered services and transportation. We saw higher numbers for homes delivered, obviously during COVID because of everybody being home. But then coming back to center, we lost quite a few people to, to COVID and also to different placements. Being stuck at home was, was not ideal for a lot of people. So our coming back to center has been kind of slow. Effingham has done a great job, Town and Country. They have a couple days that they really have a lot of stuff going on, and actually, we're now to the point where we have a couple days of meat that we're providing, like the bingo after lunch and, you know, more people coming in. So as I kind of pointed, I think in my numbers, our C1, the congregate in-center meals was a little bit higher from '21 to '22 with the reopening. It was about 1,500 meals difference. See, we did a lot of counts on how many meals we serve, because, you know, obviously people are going to come in and eat. And then home delivery is kind of a steady course. But, you know, has to do with not only, we add whoever needs it, but we do lose people throughout the year, so.
And as far as ARPA, was the 21,713 your total ARPA?
21 is from the state, and it was some random number, but all of our ARPA money, they did it based on a 2019 number. And then they, they did their own calculations. We never even applied for it. They just said, here, this is what we're going to give you based on your 2019 numbers. So it was for very specific items. So a lot of it wasn't able to be used for operating costs. And when I, our main budget of 290, and what we do with the 125 from the county is help pay for our operating budget. So when we did ARPA funds, that was a very specific thing of program management items. And then the city is having us request, they're doing a 50-50 cost share on their operating. So we did get, I think we'll get like 8,500 from them after we complete a project to buy new refrigerators and, not refrigerators, sorry, steam table, warming cabinet, and we have purchased a new vegetable steamer to be used in the kitchen. So those were very capital items. And then the area agency actually funded an ARPA program as well, but it was all specific on site modernization. So we are doing brand-new bathrooms in Effingham, lighting some of the cabinetry in our kitchens, some of those kind of updates. And then in Ashes, revamping like tables and chairs in the dining rooms, updating our front room, it's like our TV art room, so that we can provide more activities, like bigger screen. We have a real small TV in there right now. So hopefully, being able to update and provide things for people to participate in in our centers. But it could go to buy bigger gas for my vehicle, so that's one of those things.
Eric, do you have any questions?
Not so much. Now, being on the area agency on aging board, I, in answer to Alan's question about the COVID and participation since, the site at Effingham has really been one of the best at getting the numbers back afterwards. And that's been really site-specific. Some centers, it's been really slow. Other ones have been really utilizing, utilizing the, the congregate meals as a socialization thing. And that's one thing that they really saw that, that was the big detriment during the COVID thing was the so many people were isolated and didn't have anywhere to go. So it's, we've been, they've been encouraging people to participate in the congregate meals and, and get back to, you know, the interaction thereof, so.
These stuff, they've done a great job, and I think their people really wanted to get back out in the community. So he's right, they've done well. Actually, it was a little slower, but now we're getting there. We're back to providing more things for people to participate in. And we're seeing, like you said, specific days for more stuff, more stuff to do, and people are, you know, coming to participate in it. So we did have some fear, a lot of people are still a little hesitant, especially with the older population to come back out. So you just try to use that fear and find that population of what's going to come in, so.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming.
I appreciate your time, and if you have anything that comes up, here's where I'm at.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thanks, thank you very much, guys.
Before you go, the commission had asked sort of to verify for you your requirements on funding. KSA 12 and 1680 deals with programs for the elderly. There is no requirement, unless there's been a petition filed at any election. There's no requirement for a levy for services for the elderly in Kansas, although it's something that you need to do. So it's discretionary.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for. How's it going, guys?
It'll be a great.
Are you ready for it? Yep, we are running ahead of schedule, so Tiffany Hoffman, Atchison County Conservation District, 2024 appropriation request.
Good morning. I sent a packet. Did you guys have a copy of everything?
Yes, you do.
Okay, perfect. Did you have any questions for me? I'll start off with those, based on our annual report or our accomplishments through the year.
Eric, did you have any questions?
Not, not off the bat, no.
Okay.
Okay, well then, I will just kind of start off. There are some things in the packet that I didn't include, so I just kind of went over those. We are requesting a seven and a half, seven and a half percent increase this year for a total of $33,882. Just based on the increase of life these days. I mean, it's just, everything seems to be going up. So in the last year, we did donate to our Atchison County FFA chapter to help with some things that they had requested. So we did make a significant donation to them, and I do have that exact amount if you want that. And those come out of our enterprise fund, so that doesn't even come out of our state appropriations. Those are things that we can't take out of our operating expenses. We have to take those out of our enterprise fund, which that fund is based on our seed sales that we sell, our equipment rentals that we, the revenue that we bring in from that. That's where those donations come out of, just because the State Department of Conservation, we're not allowed to use our operating expenses for those. But we still want to be able to give back to our local chapters and organizations. We did donate to the Women and Ag that was actually held on May 24th. And we had 331 poster entries this year, and we were able to have USD 377 and 409 participate. So we're getting, we didn't get everyone from 409 to participate, but I reached out to the elementary and middle school principals. And then they put me in contact, because I think they got some new staff in there. So they selected a few kids that knew would participate. So hopefully, that's another step that we can just continue to get more and more every year.
Then they change principles and everything coming up, so.
I'm nervous, to be honest with you, with 377, because their teacher, their STEM teacher retired this year. She has been a huge promotion of our poster contests, like she turns it into her curriculum, and it's like a week or week and a half long activity for the kids. So hopefully, as soon as I hear who that new teacher is, I want to go ahead and reach out, just kind of start processing that with her. And then maybe that can get into her kind of schedule for the year, if she, if it's a new staff. I, I haven't heard yet. We did co-host a multi-county local work group meeting with producers throughout the county. That's a meeting that we have started to do every year. We used to do it when I first started, and it wasn't as big, so we decided to turn it into a multi-county. And when I say multi-county, Donovan, Leavenworth, Jefferson, and then Atchison County all do that. We held that at Blue Cheese this year, and that is, I'm sorry, that is not true. We held that at that was at Blue Cheese this year. Yes, I'm getting this, the one that we just had confused already with last year. We did host at Blue Cheese this year, but that is in order to get in our CAS staff and producers to kind of make recommendations, so they can see the need in our counties. So we work with in our CS staff as well, gets feedback from our producers and our landlords in the county. So that's something we hope that will continue to grow. We did have a little bit more this year, so hopefully that just continues to grow for us. We also host, co-hosted with the same counties, Jefferson, Leavenworth, and Donovan, a contractors meeting. And we had 41 contractors and staff in attendance. That is to show our appreciation to our contractors throughout the county and neighboring counties. And, and we get them updated on the NRCS specifications, policies that have changed. That meeting will be held every three years, unless there is a need of big changes from mainly NRCS. Because our contractors work with our NRCS staff at checkout, which Cam, Sherkasey is familiar with. So we can get our producers paid, but they have to meet those specifications from the Natural Resource Conservation Service. We have been approved to hire a DOC technician for the county. That, those funds come directly from the state that funds that position. We have advertised, we have spent a significant amount of funds that is given to us from the state to get somebody in that position, and we just cannot get accolades. So in our No. I honestly, I mean, I had a person reach out to me from Washington, because we ran it through the Indeed app to try to see if we could kind of reach abroad. And it's mainly the pay is the biggest. I mean, this guy was really interested. I think she would have been good. It just would have been hard from coming from Washington to come to, to little Atchison County. But she was very interested, but it was the pay that kind of held her back. Well, we just got increased, because we're not the only county that's having the issues. So NRCS worked with Department of Conservation, because what this position is, it's funded through the state, but it's kind of a training program that will eventually hopefully recruit that person to work for NRCS. And then we train another staff, and then that technician, and we just keep trying to get more in. And we did get it increased. It was about 36,000, I believe, was the pay. There's no benefits. They do get a $4,000 a year stipend for insurance. But they did bump it up to 38,000. So it was at a GS4, which is the NRCS kind of level, and they bumped it to a GS5. So Jeff Ladner, who is our supervisor, conservationist with the department, he said, he, recommendation to the board last month, well, this month, was hold off on a month. He's got some things into play on the NRCS side of things that will hopefully help us get somebody in that position. So he's real good about working with us as well. So hopefully, we'll get somebody in that position, which will again, just bring some more revenue back into the county. And we do have a drill, a Great Plains drill that goes out quite often for rent to our producers, and we have a manure sparer. It goes out, not as much as the drill, but it just kind of depends on the type of year. The manure sparer is kind of one of those things that's kind of left, that's like one of the last things that farmers want to do, and they kind of save that for when they're downtime, with that drill, like it's been going out right now this time of year quite a bit. We do have a seed license that I mentioned from seed sales. We do have a seed license, so we can sell seed from companies at dealer's cost. And then we just charge our producers 10% above that dealer's cost. So we're pretty flexible and able to give them a good price for us, since we can sell it to a dealer price. So. Any questions?
Stephanie?
Do you sell all crops or certain things?
A lot of it is grass, grassy. Yeah, for waterways. Yeah, that's somebody that's did some groundwork, and then they need to put some brome back in. That's really what we do a lot of. Eric, did I hear you say?
Yes. I know that you're involved with septic systems and things like that. And do you do design work or what, what do you offer the public on that?
We do have a septic system fund. That's called our non-point source funds that come from the Department of Conservation. And we work with our producers along with the Environmental Service Center out of, I believe it's Wetmore. Is where that
Right.
So we work with them. They're the ones that get them a permit. And then we, they work solely with them, and then we help with the funding portion of it.
Yeah.
So it's about $2,500 is what they max out on a fund for a septic system, which isn't a lot of money, to be honest. But they, they capped it, and I say they, the Department of Conservation capped that. That's not something that we, as a conservation district, put the cap on. The Department of Conservation capped it at $2,500.
But that, that can be a good shot in the arm if you're needing a new septic system. So, I mean, I, I don't know if a lot of people are aware that your office deals with that.
Yeah, I think you're correct. And it could be anywhere from a brand-new tank to lateral lines to partial system. It just kind of depends what the Environmental Service Center, when they come out and do a permit inspection, they kind of make those recommendations. It just kind of depends what the Environmental Service Center, when they come out and do a permit inspection, they kind of make those recommendations.
So municipality, as long as you're in the county, what if you're in Axson to have septic?
That's okay, as long as there is a little bit of a criteria they have to meet. But there's three criterias, but they only have to meet one. So I always tell people, reach out. We'll be happy to at least try.
Yeah, I haven't either.
Thanks. Thanks for bringing that up, Eric. Yes.
Are there any other programs like that that you the public ought to be aware of that that you offer?
We also probably one that we don't, that's not heavily. Known is we plug wells, abandon well plugging. We will fund those. That is the biggest, the big two things that a lot of people may not be aware of. We never have any shortage of spending our money. I and when I say our money from the Department of Conservation, there's never a shortage. I have twenty one to twenty two. Applications, and I'm hesitant because one, we're trying to see if they're eligible or not to apply, but they apply from March first to the fifteenth. We have over twenty some applications, and we have about sixteen thousand for our water resources, which is terraces. Waterways, and then we have about, I think it was eleven thousand for our non-point source, which is your abandoned well plugging. We can do basins through that program. We can do basins through water resources, but we try to take the basins out of the water resources. So it frees up a little bit more funds for our water resources, because that's where our biggest majority of applications come. So if we can push them over to non-point source, it just gives more funds to to folks and give the opportunity to everyone. Anything else?
Funding of conservation districts is primarily from the Department of Agriculture. There is authority for the statute that says counties may levy a tax not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars for the conservation district. Whatever you provide is also there's matching funds from the state of up to twenty five thousand dollars of. Of what you provide. The statute is Kansas two dash nineteen oh seven B. So it is a it is discretionary.
And it does show on our budget request form that I do fill out for you along with the Department of Conservation. So last year, the state did. Give us funds of, I was looking for that amount for you.
Twenty two thousand four forty five.
Thank you. That's this year. Sorry, twenty twenty three. Last year was twenty four. And they did just last week release that we will get twenty four thousand one twenty eight this year.
Do you know why they haven't matched up to the twenty five thousand?
Based on their appropriations from the county. And then based on what they get from, it's a percentage, it's not a match to match. Okay, because in my brain, it was like, if we gave at least twenty five, that they would match that. But no, it's a formula.
Go by seven and a half percent on this next year's budget, and the state will see that, and then probably raise theirs.
Hopefully, we'll max out at the twenty one thousand five thousand. Yes. Now, I do know I did speak with Donovan County, and they got less than what they normally get too. So I'm sure there's, you know, a cut because everybody's cutting.
Was your below what you got in twenty two?
So I think it was below like sixty some dollars. Yeah.
Tiffany, who did you bring with you?
I brought my chairman, Jeff Hale, with me today. Thanks for coming.
He's just being all too quiet back there.
She's she's a pro at this. I don't, I'm just here for moral support.
He's the MC.
I'm not very good at it.
I tell him he can sit silent here if he handles the annual dinner. It's kind of a trade off. Did you have any more questions for me or concerns?
I don't.
Yep. Thanks. Yeah. Thanks for the info. Absolutely. If you need anything else or have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out and let me know. I'm happy to help. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
I see that in the statute. It does say distribution shall be prorated in proportion to county allocations. Appropriations are insufficient to.
Nineteen minutes before Karen Wilson, so if anybody has anything else they want to bring up, just let me know.
So these today, we're covered all the.
Yes, other than extension. Which extension had requested mid-July, and Mark was going to follow up and see if they could come sooner, because. I mean, we're trying to wrap everything up sooner, so he was going to request next week or July third and see if they could pencil in for that.
It's good, but. Look sharp.
No, we need to do that.
Where does Mark send us? Extension sent us. That would help.
I was trying to remember what.
Yeah.
No. Um, sure. I just let Lindsay and Jody know that this could be.
Has Achievement Services send us anything? I haven't seen that one sent to us.
So Eric, it was delivered in the mechanic clerk's office. I just picked it up this morning, and it has not been scanned in, so I can print it out in paper copy for you. But as soon as I get back today, I will scan it into you.
Okay, well, I just I was looking forward to all of the ones that you sent. I didn't see that one, so I was wondering what was. Okay, thank you.
What if we get one workshop in before the fourth joint? A couple hours an hour to dedicate the budget. They start talking about.
Well, and I know that we had asked. You would send out an email to department heads to. Send us updated sheets, and HR is the only one I've received anything from.
Is there a timeline on that?
No.
Stop before then, soon after.
Okay, so.
Wanted to also let you know that I'm off. July fifth through the tenth.
So that answered your question. Yes, we should. We do it after our meeting next Tuesday. It's just easy when we're all here anyway to like, just end the meeting and go into workshop. We'll work if that would work for your timeline, Eric, if you're.
What date?
If all of your technical stuff gets fixed, June twenty seventh after our meeting.
Does it be into the meeting?
June, like like we did last time where we came into a couple hours.
Yes, I prefer that because it's a travel in and.
Yeah.
A lot of time, so.
Is that good for you?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
New prompt to department heads, everybody.
Get back to you.
Final final. Good, and down a more.
Yeah. Which that will give us two hours. I don't think we have that much.
Just as a quick note today, I have hard stop one thirty, because I'm going to be on Zoom at two.
Okay. So while we have a two P M exec session, so maybe we can. Actually, you know what? This will all be fine, because we only have a purchase order at one fifteen. So let's, we can just tell them, we can just move them up. Yeah.
Yeah, so the only thing is eleven fifty, Jerry Henry. Achievement Services and then one o'clock, Christina Rowland thirty.
Right. So actually, you know what? We have time. Let's. Because Joe is gone this week. But he's provided us with a purchase order for. So I've looked for approval for the Axerson County purchase order for Roden Bridge to McCaffrey Henderson Solutions in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. And this is for the construction inspection services on E dot five dash fourteen. Point three. That was the, yeah. Contract for resident construction inspection services for two hundred and forty second road structure Husker Bridge improvements. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Say it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, so then. What time did you say?
I'm going to call two.
Okay.
So then after Karen Wilson is here with area agency on aging at eleven fifteen. Sheldon's already done her presentation. The next one that's not till eleven fifty, is it possible to do one of your executive sessions in between there?
Yeah, I'm emailing to see if they're available. Karen shouldn't take long either. Yeah. Okay, so that's eleven twenty. These girls are gonna think I'm crazy. Communicating via email, like, are you available? Yeah, so then we can move the non-elective personnel up to eleven twenty.
Yeah, what's it is would take like five minutes if we want to do this. Okay.
He's on, he probably heard.
Yeah, I just stopped in there and asked if you could come in. I said after Jerry Henry, but now looking at the times, if we did him, then we would have time to need to squeeze both of those. Yeah.
Oh, gosh. Morning. Good. How are you?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're moving Wesley into Emergency Management I T Director for Code Red Renewal Purchase Order Approval. Thank you for. Moving up. And thank you for sending us the information ahead of time.
Yes. So today is a P O for renewal code red, which code red is the system that we use to send out emergency notifications. For weather rope closings, basically any major emergency that. That happens in county. This is partnered between the city and the county. The county pays the ten thousand five hundred dollars to on solve per code red. And in the city reimburses us two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. We started in two thousand fourteen with this program and. City County is part of it.
City County have partnered together on something that amazing.
Do you have any questions?
So I know I emailed you just based on the amount to see if the. If there are other companies offer the service and if you had checked with them. And you had mentioned that you didn't check into other companies because you prefer not to switch. Can you explain that? Why?
So yes, once you're with a notification system like this, changing from company to company every year or. Anytime you lose your whole database. Because they can't give us that information because we don't have access to people's names, phone numbers, addresses in the system. It's owned by on solve. So then if you change to Nixol or there's about twenty different notification companies out there, then you have to have everybody in your county re sign up for the new service. You can't transfer from one to the other. And what happens in Homeland Security? They have similar situation. Changed because a little bit that we lost most of our contacts because people didn't come back up re sign up. So we don't want to leave unless we have to from this software company. And I do meet with other. Notification systems and they give me demos throughout the year. Then I compare that with what code red's pay or what on solve, sorry, actually called code red is the name, but on solve. So I, so I compare with them those prices on a. By yearly basis. So we were a cheaper rate prior two thousand and twenty. But when we set out all the notifications we did because COVID that bumped us up into a higher tier. So I'm hoping here another year that we'll be able to drop back down to a lower rate than the ten thousand five hundred. So it's based on.
And we're authorizing the total expenditure, but the the city reimburses us the twenty four sixty of this.
So this is paid for with the E P G grant versus management performance. Then they reimburse that money and it goes back into the E P G.
All right, I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order presented by Emergency Management Director to on solve for ten thousand five hundred dollars for the code red standard renewal weather warning. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
The move in seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three this round. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
To us.
Here.
I'm good. How are you?
Hi. Hi, how are you? Good. All right. We have Karen Wilson with Northeast Area Agency on Aging for the twenty twenty four appropriation request. Welcome.
Thank you.
We have the information that you sent to us.
Great. Um. And actually. We serve seven counties in Northeast Kansas and one of the programs that we serve are provide is the older Americans Act. And it does require matching funds. So of our allocation for older Americans Act, there's a percentage that has to be in kind and of that. Or has to be matched. Some of it is in kind and then some of it's cash. So we do ask for. Contributions from each of our seven counties. So we are again asking for the. Twenty six thirty seven. And then we use those funds to obviously draw down federal dollars that we then reinvest in services and providers in the community. For example, we are a partner with Project Concern. So we help fund the meal program in addition to the city and the county and donations. It's a pretty. Over. And last year, last calendar year, we did provide them with over a hundred thousand dollars. We also have our contracts with Amberwell Atchison to provide at home services. So they. Provide services to our clients, bathing, housekeeping, those kinds of things. And we did. Last, this is calendar year, last calendar year, we gave them a little over fifty seven thousand dollars. So we do. Reinvest it back in our communities, but without the match, we're not allowed to draw down the.
True though. Apologize.
In addition to those services, we do also provide some tax assistance. We help with. Some transportation and project concern if they're unable to. Sometimes we're able to. We could work well with Project Concern and with Amberwell. So we do a lot of other services in addition to this, but. Those are the two main ones that we ask for assistance for because those are both older Americans Act programs. We also help with Medicare party enrollment. Health insurance counseling for seniors because those are pretty complicated. And unfortunately getting more complicated every year. I know that's about some of the big projects we're working on. The biggest, we are currently working on some new programs, but right now we're really focused. We are building a new facility in Hiwata. And with that, it's going to allow us to expand programs and services in all of our service areas. That's kind of where we're at.
Was the new location at Hiwata?
It's going to be out by Walmart.
It's a new build.
It's a new building.
Okay.
The seventeen thousand square foot facility.
Good size.
It is. And so far we have enough grants to pay for about half of it. So. Unfortunately, the timing was a little weird because we got our first grant right before COVID and then everything kind of stopped. So we're working on budgets and grants to.
Well, your ask is always a feel good, in my opinion, but we're. We're spending twenty six hundred dollars and you're giving our county in between Everwell Project Concern over a hundred fifty seven thousand dollars. I mean, thank you.
This is an easy ask.
Yeah, I'm like, thank you so much. Like, that's, that's great to, to hear what you're putting back into the community for the, for the small amount you're asking the county to contribute.
And then we do also have some individuals that self direct their care. So they pick their workers in this. And I didn't get into any of that. It just, these are the two big providers and it's. It's easy to see. It's gotten dry, so.
We'll appreciate that very much. Eric, do you have any questions?
No, I get to serve on the committee, so. We, I hear this every, every week or every month, it seems like. There, the building has been a big. Project that's been ongoing since when I started on the board and it's just been one of those things. You hurry up and wait, hurry up and wait. And so it keeps everything in flux and it makes the meetings interesting. But no, but there's a lot of good programming that's coming out of. Their budget and I think it's a very worthwhile ask.
Not sure if this you have anything? Well, thank you very much for coming.
Similarly. With regard to your obligations as a board to fund this discretionary under the same statute of project concern for. Projects for the woman.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Karen.
Thank you.
So we have. Thirty minutes. This will be non elected personnel. Lindsay is very close and Jody's joining via Zoom. So this will be non elected personnel, H R, Senior Village Administrator, County Counselor, Finance Director and Commission. Jody, twenty or thirty minutes. We have thirty allocated on here, but I didn't know.
Either would work fine.
Okay, let's do thirty just so we don't have to come back in if we need to come back in. Learn that one. One less step for the Cooks office. I love it. Feedback. It's like what we don't know. Well, there's two.
So in round.
Yeah, she, she left Senior Village at eleven fifteen and I just asked you. She's super close, so she'll be coming in any moment. Yeah. And then after, so that we should be good because then Christina, Romy is that one. And then we can do our other twenty, thirty minute or whatever, and then we'll be good for a timer. Oh. Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Shortly, she might be up there.
Okay.
So we don't run over.
Okay, that's all we have, right?
Yeah. That's all.
Sure. Spoke to you quicker. Back to our meeting.
Good to you.
So we're back to our meeting.
Look at you making it without. Thanks. Sorry for spending the time I made on people. Theo and I just got done with my psychic interview this morning, so. Anyways. All right.
I would move the Board of County Commissioners for assessing their executive session. Attorney for the public side. Which would be privileged in the non elected personnel exemption as allowed by K S eight seventy five dash four three nineteen B. The purpose of this session is to protect confidentiality discussion. It'll be twenty five minutes. It will come out in session eleven fifty. That time the opposition will present. E O C one oh four four three U S O United States Kansas. Those present will be. H R Director, City Police Administrator, County Counselor, Finance Director and the County Commissioners.
I'll second. It moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. You're heading into the session. Okay. Okay, so I don't know what's going on with this. You're, you're fine. I'd like to welcome Jerry Henry with Achievement Services with the twenty twenty four appropriation request. Thank you for the information you sent over. Or yours.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Welcome. Thanks for having me today and I. Will read what I sent you, but I'd like to kind of go over the presentation. There's some things in here that I think. You know, as for, you know, what our next three years may look like, and I kind of wanted to talk about that a little bit. I think. A lot of interesting and very exciting things that may become our way in the next couple of years. And so I'm going to go over that a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so but I just highlight my letter and as. As you all know, I mean, Achievement Services provides. Twenty four hour care, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days out of the year. Support for development to the disabled adults in Atchison County. We also do work in Donovan County and up in. Over in Holton, Kansas. So, so, but. As all of you know, as every business is trying to struggle with employees and keeping qualified employees. It's very difficult for us. I mean, not only do we have to find people that want to work, but they have to meet a number of. Issues in the way of passing registries. They have to pass. Let's not be a felon, not have a driver's license that's suspended or revoked or need to do a lot of training and. And we just have to be able to allow them to be one on one with a handicap person that may not have the ability to defend themselves or talk to themselves. So. So it's been a very difficult time trying to find people. And I think, as I stated in my letter. It will continue to be that way as we all know that it's hard to find good quality staff. So we. We're trying very hard. We've increased our starting wage from eleven dollars per hour to sixteen dollars per hour. The Kansas Legislature has really helped us the last couple of years. Addressed some of these issues and has provided us with additional funding. And so I think. Hopefully we'll be competitive. That's all we can ask for is to try to be competitive with our peers in our community with the work we do. Again, our work is very hard. And it is any nursing homes or any, I know it's, you know, taking care of adult individuals that are in wheelchairs and adult diapers and feeding and. You know, weekends, nights and. Friday evenings, Saturday evenings. It's hard to find people that are dedicated that want to do that kind of work. And there are so many other options out there in the community. So. So we're going to keep trying hard. We will try to find people that we can trust, be alone with our people. Working on that, but. Just say, you know, it seems like last couple of years has been a significant achievement is just getting through the week with staff. So we've, we've gone through administrators coming to work and doing things. We just can't find anybody else to do. So. It's okay. I'm going to move on. I, you guys saw my financial stuff. If you have any questions about that, I'm not going to plan to. Address it. I did pull my letter from two years ago when I was here during the height of the pandemic. And we, you know, we were talking about a lot of, we lost a lot of money during the pandemic. We lost a significant amount of money. Half million dollar ratings and trying to keep people working. During the pandemic, we never shut down. Our administrative office never shut down. I, it was my intention that we had to. I, it was my intention that if we had to require our direct service providers to come to work, that administrators had to come to work also. We end up doing some intense training to be ready to do things. So, but we fortunately, the legislature's helped us. We got a little bit of return from the federal government on employee retention. We're offered, as I think I stated in my letter, that, you know, if you retain your employees, don't let them go and keep training. We'll, we'll fund you, we'll reimburse you. Well, then all of a sudden, when things got tight, they said, oh, well, we were kidding. We just didn't get the funding. But, but we've kept trying and in my letter, I said, you know, the board directors and I will keep trying to get our back to financial stability. We really were fortunate to have financial stability during that time. I don't know how businesses that didn't have a financial base was going to make it through this time. So anyway, I, I, I think, you know, we will be funded well enough to be competitive. So I wanted to go into a couple of areas where, and most of it's related to Medicaid. And I think that even works with the program, you know, with nursing home, what's happening there. For us, you know, in Kansas, all of our funding comes, a lot of our funding comes from the state of Kansas and into federal government. It's a pass-through and the state of Kansas gives that funding to managed care organizations and they're the ones that provide the oversight of our programs. And that currently, probably by the end of this year, the state of Kansas is going to ask that their request for proposals for new MCO contracts, managed care organization contracts. And so the three contractors that are now have the, have it, are going to be in a bidding process with others. We know others are going to bid in this process. And it's been a whole lot different for achievement services and I think for programs like ours. I don't know what other agencies are experiencing, but it's been, it's been refreshing to hear other MCOs come to us and say, what do you want us to provide you instead of, here's the list. And then a lot of times we're denied funding. These new ones are really coming after us. I'm always aware though, they are insurance companies. I don't want to be in, make mad anybody who turns companies, but they do protect what they have to protect to do that. But all in all, and I, I provided you with on June 11th, Kansas, the Topeka Capital Journal put out a very nice article about what's going to happen with Can Care and how the process is going to start and then it'll take a couple of, about 18 months. And then we'll have new MCOs that hopefully will provide us with some more funding reverses for things that we've been doing for free. Or not free, but we thought could should be part of the process. And so, so we're, I, some of our colleagues, we are engaged with these MCOs and saying, and here's the things we're seeing in our communities that we really need support for and need help with in our, with the people we serve. So I wanted to provide that to you, because I think I can almost positively come to you in the next maybe year or two and say, you know, they are now paying for transportation to doctors, you know, doing things that we thought, you know, MCOs should be paying for. And they've been denying it, but I think now they're going to do it. So it's going to help us be more proactive and be able to do things and help. You know, we have a nurse on staff, we have to pay for that nurse completely out of, you know, funds. But we feel that there are a lot of things the nurse does in our program that the MCO should be funding for us. And so, so we're going to go after those type of things and talk about that. Secondly, I wanted to talk about, I sent you a letter from February 9th of this year from the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services. It's called a Community Support Waiver Program. And right now, Kansas has the IDD Intellectual Development Disabilities Waiver, and it's just one waiver. And all of our individuals that are, a community support waiver will be like a second waiver. And the IDD waiver will be for what I consider are more severe, profound individuals that need pretty much 24-hour care, need some type of help with assistance with food and toilets and bathing and all that. A community support waiver will be for individuals, and let me just make an example, like right now, Achievement Services works with 20 people that are, have a developmental disability and they live at Long Towers downtown. Okay, we, yeah, Long Towers has given us one of their rooms is our, is our office. And we just go through the building, you know, we do, we intentionally make sure that we don't have everybody on one floor. It's, they're spread out all over, it's a community setting. But we go there and we just provide what service they need to stay independent. You know, if it could be budgeting, it could be, you know, someone would run through their money in three days if you let them. Someone would not eat right, so we'd budget, we'd, you know, work with their menus and help them shop and make sure that. But they don't need 24-hour care. And that's what this, this new community service waiver would really address. As I say, I'm not going to go through each one, but on the second page, it shows a pretty good, at the top in the chart that I sent. It says, I won't go through all this, but it shows all the services that, and it's going to be like a smorgasbord where we could sit down with either that individual or the individual's parents, individual's brother, sister, whoever guardian, and we can build around them with services they would need to remain independent in the community. And then we would be, we would provide those services or somebody else would, whoever, it'd be, it's almost likely to be self-directed. If they have somebody that could help them, they'll get paid to do this. And as you can see, this, this will take a cut, a year or two to develop with, go through CMS and get approvals and all that. But at the bottom, you can see that in the second column, it says estimate the number of beneficiaries. That's what B and E S stands for. And at the bottom, they're, they're thinking that on the low end, we could serve 3,600 people, but the high end could almost be 7,500 people in the communities with this waiver and allow them to be able to stay in their home, in a home, in an apartment and not have to go to a 24-hour care, very high or expensive program. So, and again, I, I won't read all this, but you know, there is on the third page, how, how it's going to be, to be developed and the implementation of it. The Kansas Legislature has written, provides or saying, we would, we fully endorse this. We would like for you to tell KDS to move toward CMS and get approval, and they will fund their portion of it. Funding of this is 40% will come from the state, 60% comes from the government. And so, and then the, the last page, I wanted to show you, I mean, a lot of people just don't realize, these are all the different waivers. And I know some of you are, are know about the, like the federal elderly waiver, the brain injury waiver. Our waiver is the IDD Intellectual Development of Disabilities, which is the second to the last. We're serving just a little over 9,000 people in the state of Kansas. Unfortunately, there's 4,800 people sitting at home waiting for services, you know. Unfortunately, we have a lot of people with developmental disabilities that graduate from high school and they graduate to their couch on, in the living room. There's no services for them. So as you can see, and a lot of those, a lot of those numbers there, 4,800 some are, would benefit greatly from the community support waiver. You know, they don't need the, the services that we provide, they would be able to do that. We have people that are on the IDD waiver, taking a slot, some of those 9,000, that we can move to the community service waiver, something like we're at. And then we can use that slot or that funding to help fund somebody that's severely disabled, that needs 24-hour care and needs a lot of more retention than some of it. So anyway, this is what we're going after is, and then the PD waiver, fiscal disability waiver, that also has some of that, those individuals would also be able to have some of these services. So as you can see, why are they saying 7,000? You can see the number there is, what they're trying to attack in the future is getting this waiting list down. And what, what happens? Unfortunately, most of my new individuals that come for services to achievement services, their families in crisis. You know, dad died, mom can't do it, parents are too old, you know, something has happened in their life and now they're in crisis. And it's not a good time to start planning and doing things and change a life when you're in crisis. And that's exactly where we're at right now. Some of these individuals are going to wait 10 years on a waiting list just to get services. So the legislature is working really hard to work on that issue. And that's why they developed this community service waiver. We, we will be, achievement services will be, you know, gearing up for that. You know, we potentially could see roughly a million, million and a half dollars in revenue for us to provide this support. And so we're kind of gearing up to be prepared for that. So as you can see, we've got a number of things that are going to happen for us and it's all going to be, I think, very positive for, not only for achievement services, definitely not, but for families and for individuals so that they can remain in the community. And not cost, not being that what we call the institutional care, where you have to do 24-hour care and leave those spots or those, that funding for those that need. So anyway, ma'am chair, that's, I wanted to run through that real fast and you asked me about that. I don't want to go over some things pretty fast or maybe cover, but I'd be able to answer your questions. Okay.
Commissioner Noel, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Commissioner Eubus?
No, I don't. Pretty familiar with this.
Yes. I didn't, I know I didn't have to come and give you a lecture on.
One question. It's obvious with expansion of services, you're going to have to expand your appointment.
Yes.
Yeah. Rough idea what that would look like. I mean.
And then that's truly, I mean, everybody says, well, it's going to take you like 18 months for the state of Kansas to get ready.
Right.
It's going to take us 18 months to, and that's why we're, we're going to use some of our financials. I don't know, it's not savings or starting gearing up for that, because a lot of our, a lot of our colleagues will have to wait until they see the money and then go start hiring. So, you know, we're hoping, and as I say, I, you know, it's, it's hard in our staff meetings to say, well, might as well just give up. We can't give up. You can't, you know, our, our goal is to serve our individuals. And so it's going to be hard, but we got to still get ready to do it. And Alan, that's, this could be interesting, I'm sorry, history is, it's going to be interesting to see, you know, what, what type of staffing we need to do with that. Yeah. And, you know, transportation is very, very costly to have the vehicles. And what's really, what really bothers me, not bothers me, but serves me more than anything about this is no shows or get somebody hired, pay them $16 an hour, they drive all the way out there and they get there, nobody's home. And if we don't, and if we can't provide service, we don't get paid. It's a fee for service. So it's, it's a gamble. It's, this is.
Bugs work out.
Oh, they're real continuously, they're real. But every business is kind of challenged with that right now. I mean, I know, I know a number of businesses would love to expand, but just can't find staff to do it. They have the money to build the facility, they have, they have the contracts, they can sell it if they can make it. So I, it's a challenge. We told the legislature that, you know, we're up to trying, we have to, I guess. There's no other option for our community not, not to try. So, but we'll, we're ready to kind of start moving in that direction. So we're, but it truthfully, my last comment and I, you know, it's, it's easier to find individuals that will do this kind of work. What's hard is, you know, this kind of work is, you know, you can do it during the day and you're not really too much, it's not in the evenings, nights. This, it's trying to find somebody to work on Friday nights and, you know, and all the weekends, holidays. You got changed diapers and, you know, it's hard work and we're paying people incentives to do that type of stuff. That's, that's what we got to do is, and there are certain people just want their 40-hour paycheck and that's enough. Well, we have others that will take incentives and do things for us. There are ways to figure it out, but it, you know, and each employee has different incentives or ways that we have to work with their life. So, so, you know, it's, it gets down to you got to work with your employees' life and make work.
This is a situation where there is not a specific statute regarding county's obligation to provide funding. It's something that, there, there is one that applies to physical disabilities, which would maybe fit in a little bit, but even that is discretionary. So your funding obligation is discretionary.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for allowing me to be, in time you need anything, let me know, please.
Right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So we have 20 minutes until Connie's on. Let's go ahead and do executive session, 20 minutes. It was the one that I had sent with County Counselor, Senior Village, HR, Finance Director, and Commission. We do the confidential data exception on that one. I originally asked for attorney-client, but just want to make sure I get that right. HR, Senior Village, County Counselor, Finance Director, and Commission.
Okay.
Yep, same group, just different.
How long?
We have 20 minutes. So the trust, trust or. Or I'm asking, or financials of. Senior Village Church.
It wouldn't be for powers for the. I think attorney-client feels better.
Okay, well then we'll do attorney-client, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would move the Board of County Commissioners for session to executive session, so the attorney for the public body, which we privilege attorney-class privilege. As allowed by KSI, KSI 75-43-19B. First, the close session is to protect confidentiality discussion. Work will come out of the executive session at. 12:30. Right. Yeah. And at the EOC 10443, USI, Kansas. This person will be HR Director, Senior Village Administrator, County Counselor, Finance Director, and the three commissioners.
Okay, I'll second, it's been moved to second and all those affairs say aye?
Aye.
Pass this three to zero. Yep, sure. I don't know if Connie's going on soon. Okay, perfect. Sorry Connie, Alan's going to use a rush.
Okay. I'm going to mute myself, it's really loud in here.
We really couldn't hear anything, Connie.
Connie Ellerman, County Treasurer, Credit Cards and Cash Receiving. Thanks for coming on, Connie. We got your email last Tuesday during our meeting about the issues with departments on credit, taking credit cards and entering the receipts. And so we just felt like it'd be a good time for everyone to get their heads together and find out what we need to do at the end of the day to service our constituents and work well together to come up with a, a plan. So if you want to kind of explain some of the challenges and then appreciate department heads and elected officials joining us so we can visit about it and come up with a resolution or a solution.
Well, it's been a challenge for us because a lot of these credit cards are being taken and. Well, it's been a challenge for us because a lot of these credit cards are being taken and then they're not deposited for on the day that they are taken. And we've even had a few that have been taken and two weeks later, we have to ask the department, you know, are you going to make that deposit? So when that is cumulative and we have several different departments doing it the same day and it just makes balancing a nightmare to begin with. And also it's just not good business practice. I mean, I can't take money to the bank and tell them I'll catch up with them later. So I don't know if we need to look back at, you know, we did have a cash receipting training that Wes kind of came up with a couple of years ago. We send that to new departments or new department heads and new people when they're doing the cash receipting. I don't know if maybe we need to look at maybe doing some training back, you know, on when we are doing our county training on Columbus Day, maybe revisit this and just get everybody kind of on the same page.
Two, three, two, speak up.
I've got a question for you Connie. So is there another way to do this? Because it seems to me if a taxpayer comes in and wants to pay a fee or get a license or whatever it is, and the courthouse is open, they need to be able to pay that day. And if it's at 4:30, it's at 4:30. I mean, I can't imagine every county does it like quite like this. It seems like to me you ought to be able to, like the bank even will do on Friday, they'll do it all on Monday, you know?
And I have asked departments, you know, even if it's at 4:30, go ahead and do that, do the credit card, but you need to make that deposit that same day. And then send it to us. So what people are doing is they're taking the credit card, but they're not sending us the cash receipting side of it until the next day or the next day or the next day. And when that money gets deposited into the bank, it comes in as everyone's charges together. And if we're off, I have to go back and figure out why we're off. You know, I have to figure it out. And if, if there's a bad credit card that comes through, that comes in as a negative. And so there's many other things that play in. And if, if everyone's not doing their part and getting us those receipts out of cash receipting the same day that they're taking the credit card, then it doesn't work.
I didn't want to interrupt, but with that process, if we have, you have a rule for us to have our deposits to you by noon on that day and we can't receive more than one time per day.
Per person. So, I mean, if you're the only person in your department, then that might be one thing. But I don't think we have very many one person departments in the county where somebody else can't do that. And we've even asked people to reach out to us. And if it's the case where we need to do the deposit for them that day, then we can. But we've, we have said all of these things, please reach out to us. And it's just one thing after another and it gets ignored and then people aren't doing it. And then we're having to chase these deposits down.
In my office, we can't take just the credit card if we do a doc, one document. We don't do it that way. We can't just receive it in to the treasurer's office. It goes to her the next day because we have a different, we have to split it out for all the tech fees. So it's too hard and there'll be errors and everything else, but we're doing our monthly balancing to do one receipt for a credit card. And then the next day we do other balancing for the cash and the checks that we received. Because we do everything the next morning.
Is that sufficient to have it the next day?
No. All of our credit cards are, it all comes into the bank. And so that's the problem. When it's coming in as a whole. So if there's another vendor that we could get, you know, where everybody could, I mean, maybe that's an option to explore because the way that it's done right now, it all comes into the bank together. And if I look at it and it's $42.50 short, then I have to go find where that $42.50 is.
I'd even told her that I could bring her receipt as that credit card copy, kind of let her know that that's
And that wasn't, that wasn't working because we weren't able to balance that day. We need to have it put into cash receipting so that we are able to balance to that.
Is the limitation the software you're using or, I mean, I'm trying to figure out where the catch is.
We are one entity. So even though we have multiple departments, we are one entity and it comes in as one deposit into the bank. That's why it all needs to be cash receipted in on the same day.
So when, like you say, you're 40 some dollars short, you have no idea even where to start at because it could have happened anywhere in the county. So it's not
I can go in and run reports and then I have to chase it down and I have to run the reports. But if somebody did a 4250 today and a 4250 yesterday, then I have to figure out which 4250 it is because I don't have that information. And there's a lot of chasing down. So I don't, I mean, we could explore and see if there's other software out there. Right now we're going through the state through Can Pay is what it's called, the Can Pay Counter. And I, I think there are other options, but then we might look at having to pay more fees, et cetera.
Has anybody looked into what other counties are doing?
A lot of counties use this. Wes, I think you set it up even before I was down here.
Yeah, so most counties use Can Pay. It's through the state and we don't pay any fees. It's 100% free to our county teams can pay under the state umbrella.
The customers take the fee on.
Does pay the 2.5%. If you go with another central square or another credit card vendor, we're going to pay if you have
Sorry, I'm not that versed on this. So I want to try to understand if, and I'm going to use Joe as an example because Joe came last week with asking us, like, do you want me to take just cash or check? Because we're having a problem getting that to you. And I know he talked to you about it as well. But if Roden Bridge accepts a credit card at 4:45 PM, it's coming on yours and your office closes at five, how do they get that to you? Like if they brought it over at five o'clock, came to the courthouse and left it in
They can email, they can email it. We have, we have said that multiple times. You can email the credit card receipt to us.
Okay. So if they emailed it at 10 till five?
It has to be put into cash receipting. So the, the receipt for the credit card and the receipt in cash receipting. And once that's process is done, if they have time to take a credit card at that time of day, then they need to make sure they've got time to take, you know, to put it into cash receipting. And then that only takes probably, you know, two or three minutes to do. And then they can email it to us.
So can they just move the deposit deadline from noon to five? Does that help? Like one deposit by five o'clock and you have all of it in the cash receipting?
Credit cards can be different, but we cannot take a stack of checks or a stack of cash at five o'clock. Credit cards are different. We can take that deposit late in the day.
Okay. Is that the solution?
Mine goes into one.
Cash, check and credit card.
Yes. It cannot, I cannot just one document because it's a credit card and receive that in.
So this is like the conversation when we were having with the purchasing policy, not one size fits all. So would your department ever have that staff or could you be the exception to the, like, I don't know. I'm just trying to listen to everybody and come up with how we service constituents. Are you the only office that does? Is that something a viable option where?
No, it still makes it off because if she takes a credit card on Tuesday, that deposit when it comes in, it's off. That's the problem. I'm not able to actually to balance. And so it, it is a nightmare to reconcile and do that.
Another thing that's been brought to me is change. Is the treasurer's office allowed to make change? Because your, your office is the only office in the courthouse that holds cash, correct?
We don't have the space right now. We don't have our vault. We don't have our safe. I don't think that, we don't have, we don't, we're not keeping a lot of change right now.
But when you get back into your space, then that would be fine for other departments. I had a department head that had a, where they needed to make change for their constituents and they weren't able to do that. So once you get back in your space, then you'll be able to make change for them?
Perhaps, yeah. It's, you know, when we've got a line out the door and we have people, you know, over the years, we've had people that will like come in the other door because they need change and we're waiting on a line out the door on tax day and people are coming in to get change and it's, it's not always a good situation either.
Is it possible to keep your deposits for the whole day and actually make the deposit the next morning? It seems like if you don't
That's what we do. But but we're, we're
Credit card separate, she wants it separate that day as soon as you do it.
Okay.
I can't do that because mine is all done and I take out for the Harris stretch, I take out more everything and my reports are not going to balance doing it that way. And I usually, the next morning when we take it down, we'll give her a copy of what the credit card is, receipt. We put that in there along with our, because we get CIP file and CSC money also. Because the I have money that comes in the next morning also from ID recordings.
In cash receipting, can you predate or postdate, can you choose the day before say on the I chairman?
We can and, and not in inter receipting, it cannot be done, but in general receipting it can.
Never mind then.
Michelle, is your office having any issues with this?
We're going to have to get paid cash basically to make change. We have, we're open to five o'clock. We have people that come in at two minutes till five on a Friday, wanting vote register so they can go off the weekend. And so we have to sometimes take cards. So we try our hardest to make sure that everything gets submitted the way it needs to be, which sometimes includes people staying after five o'clock. I mean, we try to do the best we can. We have three people, four people in the office that can cash receipt. So if we have a credit card, then somebody else has to do the cash proceeding for any, you know, anything else. I mean, if you have multiple credit cards, you have people that, that go through and they have to use, they have to process credit cards. You can't process a credit card and cash receipt under the same cashier number.
You can, you just, but not if you've already done the deposit in the morning.
If she, if it's not there at five, we try to get them to her by 4:30 or as soon as we get them done because we don't want to take, you know, credit cards that we have throughout the whole day down to her at 4:30. We try to do them as we process credit cards.
Is there any way to stagger hours to where someone comes in a half hour late and stays till 5:30 just to finalize that final process? Like I, I don't know. I'm just throwing out ideas.
As far as my office, we stay until the customer's satisfied. I mean, we will stay, but it's getting that information. I mean, we can send it via email because we save everything on PDF now. We don't print those smart cards. We don't, we print the receipt for the customer, we print the one receipt to send with the money. And then the other one, we don't have a book in now. So we have everything saved to PDF in a file. So we try to email, I mean, we try to, we try to complete our transactions if we have something that's late. But we're, we're not going to stop hoping somebody, they come in and then we find out after five o'clock, they don't pay my credit cards. And there's a lot of men that don't carry cash or check. I mean, and a lot of men are the ones having to get fishing license, you know, game license, bill license, you know, registration. So I mean, we do, do, but we try. I mean, we try our hardest to try to make everything work, but we don't always. We're not always there with that information to Connie before she shuts the door.
And if it were happening just every once in a while, but as a whole throughout the county, the other day, we had multiple departments on the same day. You know, and then the next day, another department did it the next day. So it's, you know, we understand if it's because that person is there at 4:55 and we've already shut our doors to run our reports and get our end of day stuff done. Because that takes us a little bit of time to do, because we have so many customers ourselves that it, it takes us quite a while to get that done. So we understand if it's a once in a while thing, the problem is, is that when it's, it's becoming an issue or it's not done even the next day, or there's no contact made with us for us to even be aware of it.
Wes, do you remember how prohibitive the costs were on those other programs that weren't free to the county?
I'm sure it's changed from then till now because we did that in 2012ish. So I'm not sure the price has changed from then till now.
And at that time, no other departments did credit cards. It was only the treasurer's office. And that I think is why the previous treasurer didn't have other departments doing it because it's, it's created so many other accounting issues for us.
I, I think I would like to see, maybe investigate, see if there's what programs are out there, see if that would work and then, and then weigh the cost and see what that would do. Because if there's, because there's all kinds of different programs, I'm sure floating around out there. And that would be, to me, the easiest way of reconciling it if we could get something there that could accommodate all of this.
But rather than spending the money, if we increase the communication to where Connie gets the emails and something doesn't match, but it's in her email inbox from a department head that, hey, so and so came in at 5:15, I had to run this. I know you were done, but here's why you're off tomorrow morning. Wouldn't that be the, I mean?
If that's, if that's an every once in a while thing, then yeah, that, that would be a solution. But we, I mean, we're not getting any communication when that's happening. So that's part of the problem too. And even if that credit card is ran and then they reach out to us and say, hey, can you go ahead and put this in? We already did our deposit for the day. Can you guys go ahead and put this in? Then, you know, we can do that. And if, and if we get an email with that, then that, that's another issue. But a lot of times there's just no communication at all.
Lori, are you having any? Do you accept credit cards?
Yeah, we do. I do whatever Connie wants us to do. We're very flexible on concerns with what Connie wants.
Okay.
If it's my department causing the problem, every time I get the email from you, I go talk to Jessica and we look over it. I don't think we're the problem, but if we are, tell me.
Jessica takes a lot of credit cards for, for payments and that's usually what she does is she'll try to do it later in the day in case she gets others and then she'll email it to us so that she doesn't have to come up here. So she emails us the receipt, the credit card receipt and the cash receipting deposit.
But for a lot of money, I can't imagine that we go, make a mistake here and there. But whatever you want us to do, that's my operation at all.
Wes, does it affect you? Chair Lori, does any of this affect you?
We started to use credit cards and that's issue. The receipt, receipt, if we're going to do a deposit, we have to do it by a certain time. And then after that time, we do a credit card transaction, we can't receive it. Two people in the front office and so on. So what's up there? Transaction, so. Bringing cat. We've changed, changed our ways back. I hope it's I hope it's working. Connie's communicated with us on different things, but we just have to explore the credit card thing for a couple.
We stopped that first year.
Our constituents very constantly want me to use it. I was gonna say, in today's world, I feel like I'm guilty of only having a credit card, so I just-
We sent people.
But we have to do. And then we have petty cash. I have another hundred in because I'm running to the bank here. We we get cash in the twenties and fifties and get more cash. So that's and I can't, I can't separate my fees out. I know I'm just different from the other offices because we have so many and we deposit everything the next morning.
State chair?
I'm just hoping we can find a solution to it.
So question, if we had CIC changes where entry proceeding could say whatever it's called, choose the before's day entry proceeding with that makes your problem, or you can just register it in its office?
I don't know. It, I mean, it, it might be, um, I don't know if that would create more issues though in the long run.
No, because we're always putting it in the same day, the next day. Well, if we can go back and do it, that'd be fine.
Can we check into that?
Okay.
I don't know if it's possible or not.
But the, the problem with that is that we're balancing with the credit cards first thing in the morning. So, I mean, it would have to be, it either would have to be something that was done that evening, you know, late in the evening or before, before eight o'clock in the next morning. I mean, that's, that's the other part of it, you know, because we're balancing for the entire county and our office. So it, if we're off a little bit, then that's, that's the problem, you know? So I don't know if the, I mean, that's, and that's sometimes, you know, if somebody does reach out to us, we can put that credit card receipt in and cash receipting immediately the next morning if they have emailed us. That's, you know, where that would come in, but it has to be timely and that effect as well. So I don't know.
Something you can just email her? If you take away credit card?
Yeah, we used to. And then that way you could take them again for your-
It does, but the money's not there though. That's the problem is that when that money is coming in, she's email, if, when she was emailing and letting us know from time to time, like we would, it still wasn't balancing. It was just a notation. Because the money is all coming in together regardless of when it comes in through cash receipting. Do you, do you understand that part?
I really don't.
So-
We're ruled the world, we ruled software, let's figure out a solution.
Yeah. So you've got the, you've got the real money and then you've got the cash receipting side of it. So that, that real money is all coming into the bank together. Any credit card that is ran today is going to be, be deposited into the bank probably on Friday. And so we have to work ahead, we have to work behind, we have to figure out, you know, where this money is when that, when that money comes into the bank. When we look back at the day two days ago and it doesn't balance because we didn't get two or three different credit cards from other departments. That's the problem. But if it's put into cash receipting, then we make a note on our, um, Excel spreadsheet that we do and, and we know that it's in there and so we balance for the day.
Are you not able to set up another account for credit card transactions where it been like on reconciled those on Friday or something?
We have the EFT account where our, um, a lot of our other transfers come in, but then we would have to transfer that exact amount. So I think that would, I don't, I don't know that that would be the solution either, because then you're just looking, you're kind of just kicking the can down the road.
I think it's important. It doesn't affect my office at all. I just think that it is important for us to try to find a solution for credit cards just because you do see so many taxpayers that are utilizing credit cards instead of cash or holding cash. And then you get a lot of angry, uh, taxpayers too, and you tell them, you know, we can't take that payment. You have to go to the ATM and then come back. And then they ask, do you have an ATM in the building? No. So they have to leave and then come back and then sometimes not find a parking spot. So it goes on and on. Um, but Mark, working with CIC and knowing, you know, knowledge of finance, do you, have you seen this anywhere else? Or do you know how other counties find us looking for this?
The seven, the can pick it's free.
Yeah, if free is good.
Let me look, we can, we can say today with four, but that's still a problem. You don't have your stuff done till nine.
It's usually the by eight thirty, yeah.
By eight thirty, so would eight thirty be okay for the sheriff's office?
If it was dated the day before, is that what you mean?
Yes.
We're usually balanced down here by eight thirty, so we try to balance before we open the doors to customers. I mean, today we had a line clear up the stairs, you know? And we can't still be balancing from the day before when there's customers that are, that are trying to be waited on.
Well, I can reach out to my listserv to commissioners and see how other counties are doing it and see it. Yeah, that'd be good. If you could reach out to that one too, and maybe we can have some policy examples that we can find that can work with us or for us. Our constituents, so. Good conversation though. I appreciate everyone taking part because it's easier to hear from everybody's perspective what's going on so we can try to find a solution that works for everybody.
Well, and Connie, basically, I'm kind of spinning off of something Corey said earlier. If there's something that my office is doing wrong or needs to change, please come to me because the department head email does not let me know what my department's doing wrong. So please communicate with me so I know what we need to do to change. Because a broadband department head email isn't letting me know that I need to fix a problem. So just please speak to me or something. Because we have a good enough relationship, I think we can talk about it and-
Well, and that's, and that's why I do send it to the department heads because I, I'm not supervise, you know, a lot, in most departments, it's somebody else that's doing the cash receipting. And I am not that person's supervisor. So that's why I do send it to the department head so that I'm not stepping on those toes and communicating directly with that person. I want the department head to be aware of what's going on in their department and, you know, and take that, that on because that's not, that's not, um, mine.
Right. But what I'm saying though basically is I don't know that it's an issue for my department unless I get told specifically. Because there's, you could put, you could point a lot of fingers at a department head email. So just come to me and let me know if there's something that we need to do to change. Because I know we've kind of been different for many years. Uh, but we've made some changes with Dr. Teresa, we've tried to make things fun or fine too. So if there's more changes that we need to do, please let me know.
Sounds good.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Is Christina Romine on? I can't see the list. So Christina, if you're there, can you say, hey?
She is going to be on, I'm just gonna lie.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Had to step out for just a minute, so.
Perfect, there she is. All right. Welcome Christina. Um, I have Christina Romine with Northeast Kansas Multi-County Health with the twenty twenty-four appropriation request. Can you hear us Christina?
She's muted. Christina's muted.
Muted, fine. Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um, so we have the, um, budget in front of us that you would say?
Yes, and we are not asking for an increase, just the same amount that we have been getting, um, at least eight years.
Commissioner Noel, do you have any questions?
No, I'm on this board though, so I, I, I get, you know, things that I'm take for granted that I, I hear all the time, but, um, I know that the, um, it's, it's been the same amount since I've been on there, which, uh, it's been about eight years and, uh, I think we get a pretty good bang for the buck, so I don't have any specific questions.
Hey, does anybody else have any questions?
Don't think so.
Your funding obligation is a little bit different on this one. For, uh, the health department, you are required to have one. There are some requirements under statute for the county to assist with infectious disease control, et cetera. Uh, there's no specific dollar amount or, uh, bill requirement, just simply that it's added or funded.
Yes, and so we, um, bridge the gap between what the county gives us and the grants uh, by doing some fee for service. So we do some immunizations and some um, women's health and, and, um, can be healthy's and things like that. So we try to, um, keep that revenue coming in so that we don't ever come back and ask you guys for more money.
WIC is another big program that you offer too, correct?
Yes, yes.
So that's something that's specific to our health agency versus like the other clinic in town.
Yes, um, in our, I don't believe there's anyone in any of the counties that we serve besides the health department that is doing WIC. Um, and the same thing for, um, our emergency preparedness. And that's a public health thing that we do um, to help out with different things. And then we apply for a maternal child health grant every year. And this year, at the end of the year, KDHE is offering a workforce development grant that is supposed to help us kind of rebuild some things in public health, um, after COVID. So we'll be applying for that, but um, typically we just apply for those same grants every year. We are having, um, a very big community event coming up that Megan and Alyssa have been promoting. We are having a community baby shower where there will be, um, playpens and sleep sacks and various things just given to participants that are expecting for free and some education as well. And we wrote a mini grant to pay for that, so, um, we're excited about having some of that stuff to offer for the residents.
Yeah, one question.
Yep.
Uh, so the difference for each county that listed here is a little different for the total requested. Do you have a formula to go by or?
Um, it's been, been based off population. So even in our, um, grant funding for, from KDHE, uh, it's broken down for some of the grants based on population. So Atchison County has a, a larger population, Brown has by far the least. So that's where that difference comes in, um, is the difference in population. So our state formula grant that we get from KDHE and, and our IAP emergency preparedness, all of those things are kind of based on the population in the area.
Great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much Christina.
All right. Thanks, guys. Have a great afternoon.
Thanks, you too. Oh, sorry. Did you have something, Eric?
No, no, I was saying, bye to Christina.
Okay. Um, all right. Unfinished business, county councillor updates?
Um, the tax sale has been filed. The, uh, should, should have said something to Jack when he was here. The sheriff's office done a remarkable job of giving service on local people based on the number of people that have called me saying that they've been served. I have questions about it, so, uh, that's all.
And can you, um, just that email this morning about the court, the balance of October, Sheriff's, did you want to say anything about that as far as what they can expect on a timeline?
Well, I don't really know. I, the, the question had to do with, uh, after the last tax sale, the distribution of funds from the, from the court, we had a the fee accounting that my records didn't match with theirs. We, we did figure that out back at the beginning of June, there were orders submitted, an order for dispersment. And so checks were, were mailed. I have not talked with Connie Allerman about whether they have received, um, their check.
No.
Yeah, and, okay, so they have not. So when they receive the funds, they will, uh, apply them and show the taxes as discharged to, to remove the balance to zero. You have the timeline with you.
And that takes me about a full day of working on it to, to do that when I do do it. So, I mean, that's something that takes a little bit of time. Once I get that check, then I, I would have to clear my schedule to get that done right away.
Thank you. All right. Let's do executive session, please. Uh, attorney-client for fifteen minutes. Same as before, at least, the people.
Okay. I would be, or a county commissioner recessed, executive said, assaulted with attorney, the public body, which would be the privilege, the attorney-client privilege as allowed by KSAC seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B. Purposes of such just protective confidentiality discussion. Or will come out of the session at, you said twenty minutes?
Yeah.
At one thirty-two. And the session will resume with the EOC one oh four four three, USR United, Atchison, Kansas. Those persons will be, H R Director, Senior General Minister, county commissioner, county councillor, finance chair, finance director and the county commissioners.
Okay, I'll second. It's been moved to second and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, so we are back in open session. Um, and we had a chance to look at the, um, bills earlier, so I would look for a voting to approve the expenses.
So move.
Okay, and I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes two to zero. Eric, we'll put these in your box so you can take a look at them or have them with the clerk so you take a look at them. Um, any public comment? Christina, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. We are adjourned.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I hope to get the phone thing straightened out.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I agree.
Am I kicked off? Hello?